We'll call the town's select board meeting, regular meeting, Thursday, January seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, at seven P. M. The agenda approval, approval of minutes one, ten, thirteen. Warrants, mail, transfer station supervisory, monthly board meeting. Old business, cat backhoe repair, undesignedated funds, new business, special select board meeting, January twenty-fourth. That's usually when the wastewater treatment meeting will be. There will be no wastewater meeting that, that month. January thirty-first, we will not have a selectmen's meeting. There's five Thursdays this month. We've opted to take the last Thursday off if the board's in approval. With that, is there anything to be added from the board?
I'm gonna let her add, Ray.
He's in the ma-
Well, he's in the audience, and that was gonna be the next thing.
Oh, alright.
Alright, nothing from the board, anything from the floor?
You requested in the ma-
Just a request to speak, that's all.
Okay. Request to speak, was there any information where it should go?
Uh, it's probably under old business, but, uh, it's, it's actually, I guess, new business, Steve. New business, I would say.
Okay. In the matter of?
Uh, the memo of, uh, January one, two thousand and thirteen.
Gold, it was relation to something we received in January first. Go ahead.
I may be wrong on that.
Was it a meeting, or?
No, I received a memo. I think you received a copy of it too, from the auditor chair. I just wanted to respond to that.
Alright.
It's open.
Okay. With that, we'll take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor.
Right.
Hey, I got three, which one?
Uh, whichever one.
Your choice.
I can run.
Okay, the approval of the minutes, one, ten, thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Alright.
Warrants. Payroll, one thirteen, thirteen to one eighteen, thirteen, and the amount is sixty-two, thirty-six, General fund, one eighteen, thirteen, and the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Some of your larger items in here is waste management, uh, legal services, uh, wastewater treatment plant. Another one that stood out there, payroll, transfer, and Green Mountain Power, which was sixty-three, thirty-nine in itself. Those are your warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Alright.
Mail. "Who have a request from our delinquent tax collector? Requesting the town upon will pay for postage and the mail in the delinquent tax bill due to the way the delinquent tax collector is paid. I am no longer able to claim postage as an expense on my income taxes. I have to be seminars for delinquent tax looking. The majority of the towns pay for postage. Postage runs from around thirty-five to one-fifty per month, depending on the time of year. I'm also asking for reimbursement for previous expenses from December and January billings. I have the receipts for the postage. Thank you for your time in this matter." We have that. The board'd like to make some discussion on this.
We just went over those a couple of months ago, didn't we?
I believe we did.
I think the result was after the first of year. Is that right?
I think the results was that somebody's mother never got paid, and we felt the same for everybody else. I think that was it. There was no other date for it to come up, that I recall.
We talked about looking into a meter system.
Yeah, and that was looked into, and the cost was not savings. That, that, we did have a memo on. Well, it's brought up again, so.
Has she, have we done this before for her? Do you remember?
No, it hasn't been done.
No, no delinquent tax collector has ever collected their mailing cost. They basically get the eight percent that they get for doing the job.
So there's, like, considered like a subcontractor then, basically?
Yeah. You know, you get eight percent, you do the job, and out of that, one of the things you have to do is mail the people that owe the money.
The only thing I will say is, I do believe she's doing an excellent job. I think we're more aggressive than we have been, which the results is showing up.
Which means she's making more money.
Yep, and mailing more, so.
Yeah, and, that's- Yeah, but that's how you make more money. That's-
I think it's cross, part of the cost of doing the job. Your job is you, you got a flat rate job, well, it's like a mechanic, you have to buy tools. Well, you gotta buy, pay postage, you gotta pay something out of it. It ain't all profit.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned.
With all that said, does somebody wanna make a motion?
My motion would be-
Silence is golden, we need to-
My, my motion would be that the chair moves on with the rest of the mail.
So we're not gonna answer this?
You answered it. You, you basically said you're not gonna do anything. You don't need a vote to say that.
Okay. Thought it would be clear, but... Okay. Delinquent tax report, ten eighteen, two thousand twelve, one fourteen, two thousand thirteen. Delinquent taxes, one hundred and twenty-three, two seventeen, ninety-two. That's of ten seventeen, two thousand twelve. Delinquent taxes, eleven fourteen, two thousand twelve, is plus three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and four cents, for a total of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Taxes collected and debated, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-eight, fifty-four. Interest collected, ten seventeen, twelve to one fourteen, thirteen, twenty-four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, twenty-two cents. Delinquent sewer, ten seventeen, two thousand twelve, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven, sixty-six. Delinquent sewer, one fourteen, two thousand thirteen, seventeen thousand, two thirty-eight, sixty-three. Total collected, eleven thousand, one seventy-three, oh-three. Interest collected, ten seventeen, twelve to one fourteen, thirteen, one thousand, three hundred, twenty-five dollars, eighty-seven cents. Liquor license renewal application for Winchester store.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor.
Alright.
We have a tobacco license renewal application for the same Winchester store.
Motion.
Second. All in favor.
Alright.
Okay, while you guys are signing that, we have a letter from Tarrant, Guiles, Merrim, and Richardson, attorneys on Hart Gravel Pip. It's just a reference to the response to the phone call in paragraph eleven of fourteen of Act two fifty. There's been a delay on the involved challengers.
For your name and your address.
Some of the people haven't gone through with the process of your application. They've given instances here on what they would like to see pertaining to this, the hearts. Take care of this. Okay. Condition one is to fit your land use permit as issued to Hart's gravel pit, October two thousand twelve. The condition requires Mr. Hart to re-vegetate the eroding slope behind Turnamain's auto dealership. Recently obtained some technical literature from Vermont Agency of Transportation that includes recommendations of seed of various mixtures of soil conditions. The mix appears to be most appropriate for slopes. It is called sand and gravel sites conservation mix. This mix includes all native grasses that are tolerant to dry and sandy conditions. Also recommended the slope be hydro-sealed after the snow melts next spring, but no later than May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, as these grassy slopes require full growing season to become established. And we have a letter from one of our auditors to wish to be on the agenda, which we have I guess this could be considered in the mail. We have a estimate of repairs on our cat loader at, at the highway department. Uh, there's twenty-three hundred dollars has already been spent, and it looks like they're asking for forty-seven, sixty, eighty-five, not including tax, to do the fuel loop filtration time, the oil, and the labor. This is where they're gonna ship it out, flush the system, and find out if they could get all the materials and different pieces that seem to be floating around in the hydraulic system. The only thing I asked for last week, and I was hoping we'd have that with this figure, so we'd have both figures to work from, is to figure out what they thought at CAT that that particular piece of machinery was worth in condition it's in, so we'd have something to go by.
I saw Casey yesterday, and he said that the same offer was there that was there before, seventeen.
Seventeen thousand. And I, I think that should play into our thoughts before we put another five thousand into it. We've got twenty-three now. And then, if I'm not mistaken, this should rectify it, but there's no guarantees that it does.
Yeah, I guess the question is, is how much use would we get out of it if we did it? And how much use will we get if we don't do it? And it's a hard question.
That's what I say. I, I hate to sink a lot of money into a twenty-year-old machine if it's only gonna last a couple years, and then we go searching again. I don't like spending a hundred thousand dollars for a new one either, but I like the fact that we look at probably fifteen to twenty years out there and not have to worry about it as much.
You're gonna get two years out of it, I'd say, okay, because you're talking maybe thirty-five hundred dollars a year, or whatever, when you're done. Uh, that's not bad. Uh, it beats the twenty-seven thousand or fifteen thousand, whatever the other payment was. I just, uh, I don't know if you get two years out of it. That's the fear I have.
This is a second pump.
Yeah, you get four years after the first pump, or second pump.
The first pump did not fail internally. The shaft failed externally.
Okay.
So it didn't contaminate nothing inside. That's the understanding I have on the first pump. So the first pump hadn't, really did not. This one here, it's brass, and people I've talked to said that, uh, they can't see how it would do that much harm if that was flushed. It should've lasted a good long time. And like I said, a couple of years, if you got thirty-five hundred. I mean, we're in, for, for what? Uh, they want forty-five, we got twenty-three.
Yeah.
So, end of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yep, seventy-one, call it seventy-sixty.
That's cheap if you get a couple of years out of it.
But, that's without transportation, so your seventy-five is probably short, 'cause it's gotta cost a couple hundred dollars each way to get it down there.
Say eight thousand, four thousand a year. If you can really get two years out of it, then it's, you know, that's the question. We've got somebody here that uses it every day, you know? What other problems we gotta worry about this thing besides just what might be in the?
Go ahead, Hatt, come on up and join into this conversation. You've, you've handled the machinery.
You know, if, if this piece of equipment is worth putting that kinda money and so you get more time out of it, then tell us. If it, if you don't think it is, then we shouldn't be putting any money in it.
The, I mean, the biggest thing, the hydraulics were weak on it before. The machine runs pretty well. It's twenty years old, it's, it's loose in, in places, but as long as I've got something to pack with, I mean, that, that Wednesday that I did and stuff was piling up there pretty fast, and, and I had to have some early pulls. And I brought it over Wednesday afternoon, and I was able to push the cardboard in mine with a bunch of it stacked up on the blacktop. And I, I, he brought it, you know, it was around three o'clock, so I was able to pack the other garbage, and I didn't have to have that one pulled. Otherwise, I'd have had, they fill up fast without it.
What you're feeling-
As far as the transfer station, you know, it's just used right there, and use to pack trash and, and pick up appliances and put them in the metal dumpster and whatnot. So we don't go over the road with it, or, or things like that. I mean, Saturday, went over and got some sand, uh, till we could sand the roadway there, 'cause it was icy, but, uh, that was going over through cross lines.
What's your expectations, barring, say this works?
Yeah.
That this pumping out works? Uh, just a, a guesstimate out of your own mind on using it over there, longevity? Five years? Six years? Two?
That's-
I mean, it's a, it's an egg roll, I know, but-
It is.
Just, just a guess.
Well, I guess the question I'm bringing up is currently, this machine is being used in the last year or so, different than it has been used in the past. It's been used to load stones into a crusher.
That's, that's true. This machine, it, it, at times, was used like six days a week, uh, because the days that we weren't using it, they might be loading the crusher with it over there.
Before, that wasn't the case, for a long time.
It's hard when material in there, I, I'm not, I mean, a machinist by trade, the, the, brass doesn't bother me as much as if that were metal filings in there. Then, that's really scary, but I'm not an expert on these hydraulic systems. I mean, there's a reason they filter them, and-
Well, I'm interested in the fact that, alright, we have another machine.
Yeah.
That has nine thousand hours on it.
They're both pretty close. That one's got eight thousand something. I think the John Deere you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only two years newer than this machine. I think this is ninety-four, and it's a ninety-six.
See, there's, there's another thing that comes to my attention is, if we go this route, now we put the highway department and the John Deere for their major piece of equipment, What is our expectancy out of this? Are we doing a little bit of a crapshoot, that the one that you've got over there doing yours is gonna work good, 'cause it's not working hard? And all of a sudden, we put the John Deere into a full-scale use of more work than it has had, and we find its life expectancy shortened up considerably in what, a year from now, we're sitting here talking about this again? Should we be looking at a new piece of equipment?
You know, it would, it'd be inappropriate for me to answer for Casey, 'cause I don't really know-
That was basically for everybody here, it's just it's-
This is, the equipment. I mean, as far as the use of the transfer station, it's, uh-
Yeah, I'm not as worried about your use. What I'm worried about is what-
Yeah, let me, let me run, let me run a couple scenarios. Get a brand-new backhoe, it sits down in the warehouse, the John Deere comes up here and it gets used for both six days a week doing the stones and his packing. How long you think that John Deere's gonna last?
I mean, that is-
You're taking your oldest machine and probably working it the hardest. The same goes if you keep this.
Hydraulics, you may better know with this new pump?
Yeah, much better.
Okay, so, apparently that pump's been going for a while, if, if they were slow before.
Back, I'm gonna say in July, I think, it, it started, 'cause it, prior to that, it had power. Now, if you, I mean, if that's got full power, you start packing, you can push one of those dumpsters right out of the, out of the thing. Yeah, you can push, yeah, I would say that it's back to, pretty close to full power, if it's not, at this point now, there again, how long? I don't know.
My thoughts on this whole thing, I'll give you a couple scenarios, too. My thoughts are, if we, uh, we don't get it flushed, I still think it'll last. The filters are in there, it's brass, everybody I talk to, uh, says that, you know, them filters will probably take it out by themselves. And it ain't like he's bullin' the machinery out. And the other scenario that I got is, I think we oughta have, uh, I mean, I hate to say it, but I think we oughta have three machines. We gotta have one over there at the, at the transfer station, uh, and I think it oughta stay there. And if we need an, if, uh, and I'm sure that that'll get us through till spring. How much of these machines gonna be working the rest of the winter? Not much. So we have a little time to think about it. And the thought is, I mean, if that other John Deere thing is, uh, how much value does that have? On a, you know, if we gotta have, have a brand-new machine, maybe we oughta trade that one in. If we gotta have one, but if we wanna go out and step out, maybe get, we haven't got bids, we may be a little less, maybe that one of them machines is worth that, to have it for us, to stick it down that warehouse in the winter. And then you've got something at the, at the transfer station, and you've got one to be, uh, we gotta spare, in other words. So if one does break down, we're not in a pickle like we were before to panic.
And you're pulling, you're taking a lot of mileage.
Going here and going there, for what? Fifteen thousand or seventeen thousand dollars? It doesn't make sense to me.
It's, just a little-
Also, also taking road mileage off.
Just a little over ten percent of the price of a new one. I mean, you, it, it, that doesn't make sense to put it away.
I mean, that's just a thought.
I mean, he is getting quotes. He had somebody come over and look at that machine Saturday.
Yeah.
Saturday, Wednesday, excuse me.
He's got several different peoples doing that, what he said.
Should we table this for another week till we get more quotes?
Well, I think that-
This is a quote to send it down to have it flushed.
And he's, he's been the guy that's talked directly to them, so he could give you more information than I could, but it's-
It all comes down to whether or not you wanna have a spare machine or not have a spare machine, and whether or not the spare machine would be something that's not used as heavy as the other two.
I, I think it definitely is needed, so we don't get in this catch twenty-two.
But if, if, say, say this thing gets flushed and it works out okay, I mean, this thing might be the thing you, you leave at the transfer station, and you don't need it anywhere else. It all, those are just do packing.
Or, we put it down, load in sand, and get him a used one for the transfer station.
Well, yeah, and bring the deer up or whatever, let him run the John Deere.
I just wanna make sure the highway department-
But you're gonna have a new one, the highway would have a new one, definitely.
Highway department needs the ruggedest one, 'cause they're gonna be doing the, the bulk of the work and the, the ruder stuff.
Makes sense to me. So that's-
My opinion on this is, to hang onto this one for now, and see what way we go on the transfer station versus the compactors. We still got, if we buy a new one for the town, we still got that one for two, we can always bring that one over and load the white goods and ship it right back.
Okay. So should we fix it?
So the motion you need to know, needs to be made in front of us, is, do we send it out to be flushed for a total of seven thousand, sixty dollars, plus transportation?
To say around eight thousand, is what you're talking about.
So what you've got now, you get twenty-three hundred into it in the pump. It's gonna be forty-seven, sixty, eighty-five without tax, to have this other work done, plus your transportation.
Yeah, we won't pay tax anyways.
So you're gonna add-
Transportation.
Five, six, eight hundred dollars for transportation? I don't know, but I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be a few dollars.
Now, one thing that I can tell you, based on what Casey told me, that the filters that are in the machine won't filter this out like the process.
Right, the microfilters they use down there.
That's the only other thing-
Yeah, 'cause that was a two-day flush down there, that they're gonna be run consistent.
Oh, so this, okay.
So it's not just to throw a couple filters, flush it, and send it back.
So it's like a heather back or something? It's, it's got real fine.
Yep.
They call it like a dialysis.
Yep.
Okay. I, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with it. I think in the end, you'll save money.
Have we got a motion to have it flushed?
I'll second that. I, I think that the, we oughta do that and save, and then if we save that machine, we don't really have that much invested in it, over what it was before.
We've gotta pay for it.
We won't get caught in, that's right, it's paid for and this and that, and I mean, if we, then if we need another machine come springtime or something, well, we'll figure out what we gotta do.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor.
Alright.
Okay, opposed, so, carry. Customer signature, us or Casey?
Our customer.
I had a customer.
Who wants it authorized the money?
Okay.
Sign it, take it out of your car.
I'll have to be here for life.
Sign both of them or just one?
I think just the bottom one.
Won't hurt anything, for sure. And we're seventy, that's right. You work with Casey on scheduling that, so you end up having a backhoe and it's not gone for half a week when you really need it?
Trying.
Okay. It's gonna be a lot off the cap, too. Who, who knows when they're available?
Now, since you're that close, transfer station report, monthly meeting.
Power's all in, uh, one afterthought that I did have and had added was a timer, 'cause when you plug the machine in, uh, it can eat up a lot of electricity, and because of our days of operation, like, it's plugged in now, but it doesn't come on until tomorrow morning, in this cold weather. And when we leave Saturday, at maybe forty-two degrees, we can plug it in, but it won't come on until, uh, Monday more, or Wednesday, when it's supposed to be zero out, so. I mean, I, I had other thoughts of me running over there, or whatever, and that didn't sound too good to me, so I think that's a, a good investment. It's programmed only for the days that we, we, uh, were open and-
I thought I saw that in the wire, I must've-
You did.
Oh, okay, alright.
But that was a separate afterthought, it wasn't-
Oh, okay, alright, okay. I was gonna say, I thought I ran through a timer there, which was something-
Yeah. So, um, the other thing is, um, household hazardous waste. I got a meeting with, uh, Michael and Margie the thirtieth of this month for the spring event, and we will get that lined up and, and sort it out. And the other thing is the, uh, e-waste event that we had in November. I thought that we weren't getting paid for that. It was apparently some mix-up. I spoke to, had a number of emails going around, and I spoke to the CEO of Good Point yesterday. Part of it is, I'm new to the way this works, and they actually, because of the system, they report to Vermont, I guess, the weights and everything, and it has to go through quite a process, so it takes sixty to ninety days before the money is distributed. Now, since then, I've, and I gotta get a feeling from the board, if you want me to pursue this, I thought if this event worked out okay, that it'd be something that we might wanna do on a regular basis. And so I've been asking questions there. I believe that it, it would be a minimal expense of putting some flooring in the building that we have. I'd have to price that out yet, and I also asked if there was possible grant money for that, and there may be. I gotta check on that. Norm gave me a, a connection to the solid waste division. I wouldn't hold my breath what there might be.
What kind of flooring are we talking?
Well, basically, when they come to get the e-waste, what we've gotta do is store it in, in under, out of the rain. Uh, Good Point will provide the Gaylords, and we have to, if we keep it separated and put it in the, uh, Gaylords, uh, when they come, they've got a truck with a power gate on it, so they can back up and, and power down, and they need to be able to run, it's a hand truck. So the flooring that's in there is all dyke, and in the center, it, it comes up like this. So what my thoughts were is some floor- So what my thoughts were is some floor choices, maybe three-quarter inch plywood or something like...
Just have a base that's...
It'll be strong enough to, to handle that, you know? So I don't know, at this point, if you'd like me to pursue that, uh, there's, there's more that has to be done, obviously, before we totally commit to it, but I, if, I've got some information here, it's an MOU that, that would be, we would have to sign with uh, with the uh, recyclers. Norm Stoughton is the director of it. I've got copies for everybody anyways. I, Northeast Recovery and Resource Association, and let me, um, and it, it doesn't look like there's...
Is this something some of the guys could maybe tinker with when there's not a lot going on?
Oh, yeah.
Over there to kinda just, that way it's not, it has to be done yesterday, just kind of a...
If, if we go forward with this, I would, I would, because of the permits involved, uh, this would, uh, if I could get this done in late spring, early summer, uh, and in this, in this documentation I gave you, it'll give you, it'll tell you on, I don't know if it ran or I said right. On the second page, I went to the second page, covered devices and non-covered devices. I guess the highlights to this would be if we were to do this program, that we would have to accept it from all qualified entities from Vermont, and we, we could require them to have a, a permit to the transfer station, which I don't think is a, should be a big problem. That's the only use that they would be able to, to have. And the reason for that is because there's funding coming back from a state program. So you can't restrict it to permit ease only. Uh, the other thing that's the, uh, it's actually in like the third page, items that you have to take that are not covered under the program would be the PDAs, MPC players, electronic game controller. You have to take them, but you can charge for them. And, cause basically what they will do with us is charge us like seventeen, no, fifteen cents, I think it is, a pound to take those. They will pay five cents a pound for all the acceptable materials, and they tend to outweigh uh, the, the ones they don't pay for, at least three to one.
So we've got a chance of at least breaking even at worst.
I mean, I, I see this as we could make some money on it, not a ton, because you're talking a hundred dollars a ton for the stuff they'll pay for. Obviously, if we did five to ten ton in a year, you're talking five hundred to a thousand dollars. But it does take away frustration from the people that come there, and I have to send them elsewhere with the materials, so.
And we wouldn't be advertising, we'd take all this stuff, but we, I'm sure we'd be on a master list somewhere.
Yes, we would. We would be on a, on a state website.
This list here, is it what, would take or not take?
We would have to take that, but they would not pay for that much.
They won't pay for none of it?
They won't pay for the, those items that are listed right there.
They're exempt from the, the...
But see, those are small items and don't weigh a lot. Now, we can charge for these, we could charge a, a, a minimum for these, or if somebody brought in a truckload, and those things we could iron out if you wanna go forward. If you don't wanna go forward, then I'll just let people know, and we won't, I won't waste my time pursuing this.
Basically, you could charge fifty cents a device, some of these devices weigh nothing and some weigh something and then it'll come off.
If you had a, if you had a ton of those devices, it would cost you a hundred and fifty bucks to get rid of them.
And, and the likelihood of getting a ton of those...
Now, when we had the one-day event, we got very little of these items. We had, we had, I don't, maybe a Gaylord of those, and we had, oh, at least six or seven Gaylords of the materials they would pay for, and uh...
Yeah, unless you get into old stereoph, but your new stuff is not, don't any size to it anymore.
Is there a lot of other places close by to do this?
Uh, Bennington will take it, at Casellas.
I mean, they, they do the same thing. Shasberry does it?
No, Shasberry does not. Bennington, if you take these smaller items, they charge you thirty cents a pound, uh, with a minimum charge of six dollars. So if you had a little PDA, it would cost you six bucks to get rid of it.
I was just asking because I didn't wanna be the only place...
In a dumpster goals.
Close by that took this stuff, because then we'd have people coming in all over the place. That's the only reason I asked that question.
And, and I, that was one of the reasons I wanted to do the single event, which I think went well and, and uh...
I read in the paper that Dorset did it also.
Dorset School does it, yes.
They said it was a place besides us.
I mean, I could get you the website where they list all the places in Vermont that'll take this stuff. But close by, the closest one I know is, is Casellas.
Yeah.
We probably should know what that is, just to know what we'd be up against.
Know what?
How many there are, to know if we would be actually...
How many other places, you mean? Oh, I can get that for you.
Cause the, the only thing I'm curious about is I don't wanna be the main station. That would, that would ruin this whole effect.
I don't know how, how detrimental it would be.
Cause like I say, if they're charging that much in Bennington, you know, most people work in mass or somewhere could say, well, we'll just drop this off in the panel on the drive-by.
Well, there is some, there is some protocol for, for establishing uh, residency. It's not on FBI check by any means, but there is some protocol, and there's, there's quite a few pages to all this, uh...
Well, so you gotta be a resident of the panel to bring it there, you just don't have to have a sticker?
No.
That's what I think Steve was, was kinda hinting along too, was if, if somebody's going through, they say, well, hey, I ain't gotta pay six bucks at the Casellas, I'll drop it off at the panel, going to Weemstown anyway.
Well, and we, and like I say, if you wanna go forward with it, we could set fees for these, these materials as well. We, it's just, the way this states, if you get...
It's true, we could do this at an afterthought too.
Yeah, I mean, we could...
Try it at one stage, and if it wasn't, it was getting out of control, then we could start doing the charging, and that would eliminate a lot of it. Okay, that, that gives us another door.
It's just, this is, this is, this, this, the state standard uh, plan.
Yep.
And uh, it just says you have to take those, but you, those you do not have to take for free.
I think it's worth looking into because it's, again, a benefit to the town's people.
It is.
And that's, that's something that...
When they get a little frustrated, they'd like to do one stop, unload them.
And that's, that's fair.
And I don't blame them.
Does this have to be in a secured building?
It has to be in a secured, secured site. The place is fenced and, I mean, you, do we need a, I, and I can verify that for you, Ronnie, I, I think we qualify.
Well, I mean, do we need like a, like a regular container or something that...
I don't believe so.
Did you, did you have to lock up?
I don't believe so. I, I took the truck driver down that, that was there from Good Point, I had him look at that building, and...
He said it was good?
He, he goes all over the state, and he thought if we put a floor in there that, uh, so that he could get his handcart in and out. And like I say, if you, at this point, if you, if you're really not comfortable and don't wanna proceed, I won't, if you do, then that doesn't mean we're locked into this, because there's...
No, I'm just asking these questions, because if we gotta get, if we gotta facilitate better, then that's another expense that we'd have to put in. If all we gotta do is put a little floor in that, in that building there that we got, then I'm, I'm, it's all okay. But I mean, them are questions that, you know, we ain't gonna say, well, hey, we're gonna do it, and then it costs us thousands and we get a couple of hundred and say, oh, do we did good.
No, no, I realize that, and that's, that would be part of the information.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it, I, I mean, I missed the other one, cause you held it on the first day of deer season.
That's, that's what I'm saying, if I do it full-time, you won't miss it. And you won't have to have a permit.
I don't, I don't see where it's a real bad situation to get into.
Because I mean, it, it, I can just get you more information if you, if you want, but if, if the board's not interested in pursuing it, then I'll just let it go, I mean...
I, I think we oughta, but I think we should pursue it.
I think it's a good idea.
We should at least get more information on it, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, if you, if you do go totally forward, there is a, I gotta get a permit from the state, then Norm will help me get, and, and, but you guys are gonna have to sign, the town's gonna have to sign, and, and there's some other things, so.
Let's take Carrie on and get more info.
And I mean, you've got this paperwork, and if you read it over and you got more questions or whatever, and then, I'll either give you the answers or get them for you, so...
It's in a week or so, or two?
What's that?
For more information?
Next month when you report?
Yeah, I'll, if you want me to keep going...
You want to wait a month? I mean, is it necessary to wait a month, or should this be...
Is it gonna start right away?
Should we be answering questions before then?
Uh, no, I think we'll be alright. I mean, if something comes up that, that shouldn't wait, like I say, to, to, to go through this and get, cause the other thing is, there is some reporting, and I've got some questions I wanna get back with Norm on, it's, all right, if the money's not gonna come for ninety days, but the way the reporting done, and maybe they can do it. If not, if, if we've gotta report it, then I would like a fact sheet sent here, so that I know what the weights are, cause that's what they're looking for in these reports. So there's a number of things that I've gotta write down and still get, but I didn't, like I say, if the board wasn't interested, then I...
Maybe what we should do then is wait until you get your information, so we can have the whole package versus...
Yeah, well, who wants to know is, do we want more information?
We're interested, I believe, with more information.
Okay.
We're very interested, we need more information.
Just an informal thing right now is, keep going or...
And get the whole package, and then we go from there, like we do the whole package.
We're showing enough interest to you to go forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
They get you?
Yeah.
Try to get, yeah, they do it.
That's all? Oh, okay, thanks, thank you, I apologize. Better going ahead of me than after anyway. Okay, we have one more thing we have to do, a vote on the undesignedated funds.
Okay, I say give them to me.
A nice lot, but...
I, I move that we move sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents of undesigned road, road fund balance to the undesignedated surplus in the road account for the budget.
Okay, that includes a contingency line of eighty-six hundred dollars. There's a motion, need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Right, right.
Aye.
I, I moved that we move the undesignedated general fund balance, which is a hundred nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-one cents, to the undesignedated surplus in the general fund line.
That includes a contingency line of eighteen thousand one hundred dollars. We have a motion, we need a second.
Carry it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, Mr. Shields are up.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the last thing you have, Ken?
Yes.
Quinn, do you wanna come up?
No. No. Uh, thank you for the time, I appreciate it. This is very brief, and I'll have a copy for Linda, trying to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, in October of two thousand and twelve, I brought to the board alleged concerns that I had found in reviewing payroll warrants, two thousand and nine through two thousand and eleven. I received on January first, two thousand and thirteen, a memo from the Chair of the Auditors, that he had gone back into the fiscal year two thousand and eleven through two thousand and twelve, and the first six months of two thousand and twelve through two thousand and thirteen, July through November two thousand and twelve, and corrected errors in the payroll warrants. This information was shared with the Select Board Chairman, I think, Steve, you probably got a copy of that, I would think, the Select Board does?
I probably do, but not knowing that this was on our agenda, I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay. Having said this, it seems that by all financial accounting procedures available, and I've been looking, that corrections are done forward, and going back into data already inputted has crossed the line. No longer are my findings alleged, but are confirmed and have been found supportive by the action of the Select Board. In reviewing these corrections of errors, false reporting in time cards, sick leave abuse, usage, vacation pay awarded without merit, holiday pay denied, not all of these are reflected in what the Auditor Chair has deemed corrected. Employees who were involved in these infractions, errors, concerns seem to be excused of any responsibility, accountability, it would seem to have been denied a due process. Going back some eighteen months to correct pay over just is wrong on so many levels. As an elected auditor, I formally asked that the board recognize that there is a serious breach of trust, responsibility, accountability, and restitution to the panel taxpayers, and petition the board, that the Vermont Attorney General's Office become involved, as well as seeking the assistance of the Vermont Department of Labor, to look into the findings of myself and the Auditor Chair, and to fix the problems in a proper, professional manner. To go back into two thousand and eleven and not deal with all the concerns, some of which might indicate to a reasonable person that a cover-up, misappropriation of town monies, fraud might exist in these payroll warrants, and might be a pattern of many years of payroll warrants in the town of panel. Thank you. Very concerned about it. Uh, I'm sure everybody's seen that memo from the Auditor Chair, and uh, I think it speaks that there's some serious problems here, and I hope the board will address it, talk about it, make a decision to go forward and rectify this.
My understanding, and again, because we didn't have enough notice of what you're gonna talk about, I don't have that paper in front of me, but my understanding is that corrective action was taking on a number of the problems that were found, and the warrants and the other things were corrected, so the budget, if somebody comes in and does an audit now, they'll see that we found the errors, we corrected the errors, and we now are whole with that. Now, I noticed that you also stated some, some errors that you viewed in the past, and unfortunately, like I wasn't here for the labor or anything, but, but the bottom line is, is that I believe both our employees were exempt, so that, so that issue wasn't, wasn't a valid issue in the sense of what was older, where money had to be changed or so forth. What we're seeing is some, what I'll call data entry type errors that have been made based on uh, transferring information from a time card to a computer file. And those type of errors occur, what you wanna do is not have lots of them. You don't wanna have continuous and forever going on. And I think, and I think, uh, my understanding is, didn't we, we corrected a bunch of them?
I'm not mistaken, number one, the first thing we have before us is two different issues. We have, whether we have two employees exempt or not exempt...
That was sound.
And that's, that's been a serious accusation that took front stage, which we are working on, and we are currently waiting for the written response to put it to bed. Um, we are currently working on the other situation, which is before us. I, I have some problems with some of the wording, and I'm looking for it. Uh, I don't like the word fraud, I don't like the things that look like they're intentional beings. I do believe, as in any business, there has been some mistakes made, uh, whether it be in sick leave and vacation or whatever, and I do believe they need to be corrected all across the board, there's absolutely no question there. Uh, how they happened is where I have a problem is, and this started from the beginning, because this was never brought comfortably to this board. It was brought to other people, then brought to us from other people and yourself. That put us at a disadvantage right off the bat, because other people knew about it before we did. So we...
So we didn't have a chance to act upon it. That I find a problem with, because it's, it's us knowing about it last, where we should have been first.
And be clear, other people means, what is it, state's attorneys and state auditors?
State's attorneys, state auditors, people like this.
So people know it isn't people talking on the street, basically-
Where, you know, it should have been between the auditors, then the Select Board, and then we make decisions. And then if we ignored it, or threw it to one side and didn't, then obviously you take the next step. That's, that's not a problem. Right now, my answer to this would be, we will be looking into this. I'm sure we are currently, and we will be looking further. But first off, one thing at a time, and right now, we're gonna end this labor law problem, and then proceed into this particular project.
Well, it just-
And some of those have been corrected, too, to be fair.
Well, you're really, you know, in, in all fairness to the Chair, in all fairness to previous auditors, it's, it's not a good practice to go back in and change data. But my letter speaks for itself.
Whoa, whoa, go back in and change data? Again, I think it's the verbiage that you're using. What happens when you correct something? You go back and you cite the error, and then you make a correction on a new accounts payable, or payroll, or whatever it is, and reflect that, so it's shown. You don't go back into the, the file and make a change by scratching something on a piece of paper and correcting it.
No, no one is saying that. I'm saying you change data, you change inputs, and you know, again, I'm-
We correct that.
Again, I'm not a professional accountant, but I think there's enough here that warrants looking at by people that know what they're looking at, and that's my concern. I do believe the employees, that apparently eight employees have already been involved in some of these changes. I don't think they were given the due process that they should have had, under the employee policy that's hanging on the board over there. I think it's a very serious issue, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna go away. It needs to be settled. As an order, if I get egg on my face, I'll take the egg on my face. But I'm also saying that there's, from what I've seen, and I have not, I, I use, I've thought of these words very carefully. And I think people in the know need to look at some things. And I think that's why the Auditor Chair, he went back on his own, because we had, we have gone in through two thousand and nine, the first six months. We never got into two thousand and ten, eleven, and he made corrections or errors that he had found. And there's multiple errors beyond that, and there's a lot of reason to believe that not all these are errors.
That, that is an assumption, and I-
That's right, that's correct.
And I, I don't like to go that, because that's an accusation against, and until we determine that it's actually that, it is not. So that, that I wanna make perfectly clear.
Well, and we should be clear that you speak of the Chair of the Auditors, but what's been brought in front of us is a list of errors and corrections to those that we can look at, look at the dates, see where they are, and know what the issue was, know what needs to be done to correct it, and take the actions to correct it. The inner windows and the rest of it that says you've got this here and you got that there, doesn't, doesn't do any good for us to work on and correct that problem. It, it's better if you give us what the problem is, and, and list it, so we can look at it, cause you talk about patterns, and you talk about continuing going on. If we have a list like that, that shows, it, it helps us better move and work on these issues.
Well, my letter is specific that the, through your direction, the Auditor Chair has found his own concerns and problems. It validates what I found, because he used the same procedures that I found. We can have errors, we can have many errors, we can have many, many, many errors, but we can have a lot of errors that lead in the wrong way. And I think that we need someone in here that, and that's why I've asked you to look through the Attorney's General Office. This is a very similar type situation. It's occurred in other towns. It's not a black eye for Ponnell, it just needs to be, the board, I feel, needs to be proactive and get in front of this thing. And that's why I brought the letter to you.
What type of actions are you talking, when you say proactive? What, what are you looking for us to do, to get the-
It's pretty specific.
The Attorney General to do what?
I'd like to have him get down here, and I'd like to have the Vermont Department of Labor send an auditor in here, a professional auditor, and start looking at things.
I disagree with that totally, until we have looked at things.
Okay.
Again, we are the first stop. The auditors bring it to us, we look at it, determine what it is. I have talked to the State Auditor. He will, at any given time, come down upon our request, if it is needed. He would prefer not to, he would prefer us to handle in-house, as it should be. And if we cannot, that's when we reach out. Right at this point, it's not time to reach out, because we haven't got there. I believe there's errors made. I said that before. I think there's mistakes made. I don't believe they're fraudulent, and I may end up with egg on my face if they are, and so be it. But we will get through this. We're gonna put one thing to rest, and then go to the other. And right now, I'm hoping within a week-
Well, I just felt it was important to bring this to your attention, and I've done that. You have an obligation and responsibility to the town and Select Board members.
We're well aware of our obligation, and we have been for many years, and we will continue to do so.
Right.
I've said it before, it's not an overpaid job, so there's gotta be another reason that we sit in these chairs.
Well, I gotta say, this is one of our most amicable meetings of recent memory. Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Ray.
Is there anything else before the board, before we take a motion? Just a remember, reminder, January twenty-fourth will be a special Select Board meeting.
Same time.
It'll be on the same time.
Here.
There will be no wastewater treatments, so the meeting will be here, and Sewer Board Commissioners won't be. January thirty-first, there will be no Select Board meeting. With that-
Same time, unless you guys wish to change it, cause it is a special.
You wanna have it earlier?
We could actually be in, we're going budget, why don't we try six? Is that a problem?
Six.
Six-thirty? Anything's better. Every half hour counts.
How about six-thirty? Cause that's gonna give people time.
I suppose the meeting was for the loader, for the budget?
Yeah, it's budget. It's our last warning, day and warning.
Yeah, then we have to, we have to weed it off and warn it.
So you wanna try for six-thirty?
That'll give everybody time to get home from work, to maybe get something to eat and-
Seven's fine, too. It's, it's up to you guys. I just, I'm the one that's furthest away, I think, well, you might be, but I have to come up on the-
Make a decision. We're bouncing six-thirty, seven.
Six-thirty, I'd like, it was six-thirty.
One at six-thirty. Six-thirty would be the time.
Okay, guys.
Okay, with that, we'll take a motion.
Yeah.
You're on the journey.
Second, and all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, thank you.
Okay.
Those pills do work. I knew they would.